All right now, I'd like to entertain a resolution to call this Committee of the Hall meeting open. Open at 8:29. Adoption of the agenda? Well, we have a few items to deal with beforehand. Mrs. Schwanja, yes, any questions? All those in favor? Carried, fine. Disclosures of peculiar interests. None? That's fine, thank you. Delegations, presentations, there are none. Petitions? Correspondence. Resolution dated 7/7/2015 from the township of Medawaska Valley in regards to the recruitment of physicians in rural areas. After having reviewed this resolution, I had occasion to fawn up the ministry. And the incentive to compel doctors to work in rural areas is still there. That's something akin to what happened to drugstores. So, this is what I would say, is that I would, let's just receive this bit of correspondence and vote to receive it. Fine, are you all in agreement with that? Fine, yes, well, that's fine. Yeah, you think... You're still eating, are you? Yes, I'm still finishing up my dessert there. That's fine. All right, all those in favor then? Carried, thank you. All right. Let's go on now to item 9.1. Question period? Any, anyone for question period? Fine. I, I do have, we do have questions, but not those questions that would fit within the question period. With regards to 5.1. Can we come up with a resolution to support them? Well, all they did was they sent us a letter, really. They didn't come forward with any resolution by themselves, did they? Well, we can vote to support the resolution. What Mr. Lelant as stated is that the motivating elements are always ever present, but they need to be fine tuned. You see, this program was never cut. The doctors are trying to obtain a bit more money to work in those sectors. You see, some, some areas do lack doctors. For example, the city of Clarence in Rockland had decided to give a venue to doctors free of charge. Well, from a governmental standpoint, would they give incitements to compel doctors to work in rural areas? Yes, yes, they do. The, the program is still there. And it was, it's, it's still there, it's still there to be used. That's fine, that's fine. It's still there to be tapped in. Let's go on out to the United Cities of Prescott Russell. The first meeting of the year, the upcoming meeting will be held next Wednesday, so there's not much of anything to say. Mr. Levaire? Yes? Amendment to the landscape plan for Clarence Crossing. Whereas, the Committee of the Hall recommends to Town Council to approve modifications to the landscape plan for Clarence Crossing to make use of the trees and the natural environment. The Committee of the Hall recommends Town Council to consider this amendment as being a minor one and, as a result, does not contravene the site lot plan and that the Committee of the Hall recommends that Town Council adopt the rural plan and to plant trees needed in the said easement with regards to the site lot agreement. The type, are there any trees that would require less maintenance that could be planted on those properties or on that property? Otherwise, if we do plant trees in that area, we might not require that people plant trees in the back of their homes if we plant them elsewhere? If we start planning or planting trees in this easement? Well, you see, we're, we're, you see, the trees on the, on the road on the right-of-way, if you wish. It's going to cost us money, right? Well, down, down the road? Well, it's, we're going to be responsible for these trees, shall we not? Yeah, yeah, there's no question, Mr. Mayor, you know, that this is an ongoing operational cost to, you know, maintaining the trees down the road. But usually though, when trees become mature, there's that first year, you're going to be sure that they're taken and once they take, it's usually minimal maintenance, but I can't say that there won't be an operational impact. But every contractor is going to ask for the same thing. Yeah, yeah, well, so, look, there has been trends towards, uh, I know that a lot of municipalities like the idea of the canopy of trees in the streets and putting them within the, within the road allowance. It certainly, you know, it, it, so you have to balance off the look that you want, the landscape features, uh, you know, the operational costs down the road. But if they're strategically placed, I mean, I, I don't think that putting in a tree in a boulevard area is necessarily, uh, you'll automatically do it. I think that you have to look at the soil conditions, as to where the utilities are, if there are sidewalks and the like. So each situation has got to be measured on its own, on its own merit. Councilor Grima? Or Schwanja? Well, the reason I say that is that if we allow it once, if we do that, then we may ask, you know, why don't just look into the bylaw and say by the bylaw, either people don't need to put up a tree or everybody, whoever, wherever they want to, can put up a tree, you know? I mean, we're going to have requests all the time and it's going to come back before us. Well, I, I think there's a specific request because of two things. First of all, it's only on corner lots, correct? Unless I'm wrong, unless I'm wrong. Well, well, but yes, and, and the other thing is it's because of the soil only, that's the only reason, in this instance, in any event. So I think it's different than normal development. If somebody would come and say, "Well, we just want to do it", we can still say, "No", I think there's a reason for that. But I like, I like the idea of Mrs. Schwanja. Can we look at other types of trees that would react well as far as growing roots and not, not being, you know, not draining or soiling the water so much? Well, I think that what we are hoping is that this particular application to approve it, you know, the way in which it is written. I believe that the last time that we talked about this, there was a direction for the department to undertake a policy under what circumstances and conditions would we allow trees to be placed within the city's right-of-way? And you're going to take a look at soil condition, types of trees, the cost benefits and so on, and the law and the like. That's when we felt, and we can ask the council, you know, if they want to go in that direction, you need some criteria, you need some criteria. Well, I agree with Mrs. Schwanja and they can come in and, you know, and face in two, three, four, five, and keep on going. Well, this request is for this space and the portion also of the other side of Clarence Creek because they have the same soil. So this request will deal with both. As Mr. Darsh has said, we would like this project to be approved with the street trees and we will bring a policy forward in the next few months to address any future requests that we might have. Well, Mr. Lelant? Mr. Darsh, you mentioned a setback of 7.25 meters from the foundation. How many meters from the street? The right-of-way depends on the length of the street. Well, are we looking at from the curve to the stream, basically? Well, let me see, in this instance, I believe it was 2.5 in this particular instance. We also have to realize that we live in Canada where there is snow. Salt? And we've had a couple of big winters with huge snowbanks. The guys have to push the snowbanks further back. The possibility maybe of killing our trees is there, or the residents say, "Well, no, you have to remove the snow", you know, we're, we're not only looking at the replacement cost of the trees, but also other operational considerations as far as this concern. So we have to be careful. Yes, well, that's what we felt that in the development of the policy, we would take into account all of these factors. I mean, you may find that the number of factors that you have to consider for the development may, may limit the actual number of developments where you can permit it. And I think that's something that council, if you want to consider raising the boulevard, that we'd have to, we'd have to go and do some research. I know there are some, many municipalities that have developed policies of this nature, but we will take a look at it and customize it to Clarence Roblin's wishes. But look, there's quite a number of factors that you have to take into account. Mr. Zent?
I think on certain things that are being discussed, I think it's a slight reaction when we talk about trees that are going to take maybe 30 years to mature. I think it's a little bit early, it's preliminary. We're asking to put trees there for specific reasons. I agree with the reason. I don't think it's going to please everyone. Uh, we're building something new, the way in which it's going to be built. You want to build it nice. You want to have something appealing for something or people to see. Saying that some snow might go on there and let's not pave the road because it might, we might cut it out one day or cut it up one day. It's going to cost money. I don't think it's relevant. To me, I agree with this plan. We have laws, as Maryev stated, that we can make sure and come back and say, "No" to certain people that want to do this forever. This is a specific case, so I don't think it's that big of a thing, really.
Well, I think I agree with Mr. Zent. I think we should go ahead with this. It just makes it nicer in this project. You know, the trees, you know, in a canopy style. I don't know if we have them in Clarence and Rockland, but they do have them in Ottawa during the winters. Well, the tree is not two meters from the street, however. Oh, well, well, that's why they have to replace them every two or three years. No, 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 no. Look, once the tree matures, there's no problem there and there's no amkeep. And I've seen even going down the street, let's say, in the fall and people cleaning the branches or picking up the leaves that are beside the street. I mean, you know, the city is not taking care of this particular business. But that's what I'm saying, sir, you know, when you have to replace them. Well, look, one at a time. To what Mr. Levaire was saying, if you take a look at Lurie Street, parts of Lurie Street, there are trees that are stuck almost onto the sidewalk. And I'd like to ask how much money we spend on maintenance on those? Probably not a lot every year and what we need, you know? We're building subdivisions. We have a great opportunity to make sure that we get something unique and beautiful. And this is a slight modification. Look what they did. In our, our neighbors in Cumberland, the trees are grown now. Of course, some of the trees that they chose are not a great hit, but not all of them. But it looks very nice the way they did it, generally speaking. And I'd go for it. My question is, are there going to be sidewalks in there too? Well, the only sidewalk is on the road entering into the subdivision. And I believe there's, might be, there might be just a sidewalk that leads onto the arena. But I know there is a sidewalk leading in, but there's not an interior sidewalk. And what's the width of the pavement? Well, usually it's, uh, pavement, is it 8.5? I think it's 8.5 meters, eh? Well, it's not like, let's hope it's not like Michel Street. Well, there's no sidewalk internally, Mr. Lelant. If you take a look at page eight, there, there are no sidewalks that are, that are delineated there. Yes, it's very narrow, very narrow in that particular spot, isn't it? The, the only question that I had, you know, the section, the right-of-way there that was alluded to in the report, I'm wondering. In Ottawa, the setback from the sidewalk is sometimes about a meter. And here, really, it's 25 feet, 7.5, 25 feet. And they have a lot of space, looking at all the subdivisions. Look, they have trees that don't become big, big trees. I don't know, it's a special tree that they put up in a subdivision like in the New Morris subdivision. It's, it's not a huge tree or species. And to say that it soils or, or it requires or takes in a lot of water and that might impact the foundation? I can't believe that, I cannot believe that. I think it really comes down to, you know, what council's vision is for the future. I know that in Ottawa, some of the prestige communities in there, like the Glebe, for example, you know, we're always talking about the canopy of trees there. And those trees are very mature. And some that die, of course, because of disease. But I think you would want to take a look at the types of trees that you put in. But it really comes down to what's the vision that you want for some of your communities? Now, I don't see passage of this particular item saying it's, it's everybody, every developer we should look at. That's when you need policy, you need staff to come back with the constraints, you know, under which you would permit it. Now, it doesn't mean that every development will be conducive to trees in a given area. But you look at each one of them individually on an individual basis. But to do that, you need to staff, staff to come back with policy. Identify the factors that will, well, I believe there's clay there, it's, but soil conditions, yeah, soil conditions will play a consideration whether or not you're going to allow trees or not. I can think about seven factors off the top of my head that we've dealt with as part of this policy. But if council just doesn't want to go there, then I think, don't give direction to staff, to staff to bring forward policy. But I think that if it's something that you want to take a look at, then I would say, I would say, well, come back with the policy factors. Tell us to come back with policy factors. As I said, we can determine whether we make it a general, you know, or a general open door concept policy so that we can have more trees in the city because we know, we know that each tree is worth a lot of money, you know? It provides a natural protection against the sun and people can walk along and it's nice, eye appealing. But again, again, my point is, if we allow it on one specific vision, unless we have a very straightforward policy, if we don't want it to become a normal policy, you know, the exception sometimes becomes the norm. This is what we want to avoid. So either we make it, we open it completely and we say, "Let's allow it in the city", and then if not, we create a policy that is very restrictive so that we have a total overview. Well, I had occasion to discuss with a few people last week concerning existing policies. And other municipalities state that developers are compelled to plant trees in right-of-ways. This is the Ottawa policy, trees need to, need to be planted. That's in Ottawa. Now, if there's a policy and I'm supposed to get it concerning the clay, because we have the same problem with sensitive clay areas, they have the same policy initiated. In those cases, they, they are putting in certain types of trees. Well, if they're compelling in Ottawa, those developers, to put up trees on right-of-ways and the municipality will take care of it, then does the municipality have a right to say what tree can be planted? Well, they take in a soil sample and determine what type of tree can be planted, right? Well, it depends on the circumstances again. Well, I don't have more information than that, however, but I'm, I'm awaiting a bit more information in the future. Is it because they wish to obtain control over the trees? Well, I believe that Ottawa does have a policy with regards to the cut of the tree per se, the cuts of the trees per se. It's fairly restrained because the lady that I talked to, people told me that people can prevent trees from being cutting or, or prevent it from cutting trees. If they do cut trees in front of their home, they're liable to find the, those trees that are on the right-of-way. But in Ottawa, they are compelled to install trees and even bushes. Mr. Zent?
Mr. Mayor, maybe, I'm just wondering if we can vote on this, vote on this and ask Mrs. Bilalte to come back with further information? But we can deal with this tonight? Or obtain information at the next regular meeting of Town Council, maybe? Might be more advisable?
Well, are, are, are we going to deal with policy tonight or not? What are we going to do here? I might have just one quick question with regards to the financial impact of this. Now, you see, the financial impact on the report, I find that for a tree, a one-year warranty on behalf of this, with regards to the subdivision agreement is not enough. Is it possible that we can obtain more than a one-year warranty? One-year warranty is nothing with regards to a tree. It's, I don't know if that can be fixed or looked at it. I know that in Ottawa, they benefit from two years for those trees planted in a right-of-way. So we might ask for a two-year warranty period, yes, for those here. Because often during the wintertime, we might encounter some, some inclement weather and that might impact the trees. So, so, a tree is a tree is a tree, Mr. Mayor, yes, yes, yes. Is everyone in favor of the resolution as it stands? Thank you, folks. But with, with a proviso of, uh, asking for a two-year warranty with regards to those trees planted in right-of-ways, that's fine. Let's go on now to the project management. Councilor Zent, you're replacing Mr. Simonno, I believe, tonight?
Yes, yes, quite a task in itself. Let me find the page in which Mr. Simonno is involved with the next resolution. That the Committee of the Hall receives a report with regards to the selection process concerning the Capital Works Project Management 2016 program. Any questions?
I'm wondering why we should be paying up to $300,000 for this? We have staff here that knows all of this as to when those projects would start off. It would cost us approximately $300,000 to decide what next program, project should be implemented? And who should supervise those said projects? It would cost us $300,000? I should have asked that question to our good folks in management, or sorry, or administration. Look, I'm sorry, Dave, I'm sorry, Dave. Look, look, listen. I just can't understand why we have to pay $300,000 to hire a company that would decide what? Priority of all of our projects? No, to implement them, to supervise them, well, to implement them. If I can take you back to the budget deliberations, we indicated to members of council that we had a very aggressive program that included the 2016 ones. Plus, there were some other programs. There were roughly $19 million at that time. And with the resources that we have, the capacity of the resources to deliver the program, we indicated to council that you had to retain project management consultant or consultants in the plural form. And, and it's the only way that you'll be able to deliver on that program. Now, what the consultant or consultants do is that they're going to function as the project manager. So if you think of a member of our staff, I'm sorry, each project is, what we're, we're going to give them, what I'm suggesting in this report is that we're going to approve a project, let's say the roads, roads and bridges. We'll identify what projects we want to look, to be looked after. And that firm will manage those projects, will make sure that consultants are brought on board, make sure that auxiliary activities are done. Will they supervise the project? Well, they will not, they will not supervise the inspection. What they will do is that they will contract administration. So, you see, they'll be the equivalent of a staff person, your manager of Capital Works. They will function in that capacity, so they will oversee the operation of that program and they will do the contract bid. Now, the consultant that they will bring on will do the design and will do the site supervision. So they're going to take a component of that overall engineering that you would normally retain, a consultant. For, well, we would provide project management, however, we don't have the capacity. Sir, we're sending, we're the overlay to a consultant, that's what we're doing. Yes, we're cashing it out. Well, they will not supervise the project. Yes, they will. Well, they won't perform the inspection. No, they won't do the inspection, you're right. They will retain, let's say, if I take a project, one of the road projects that are in there, they're going to, they're going to have a project management firm on board and they will make sure that we get a new process to retain a consultant to do the design. And then that consultant will provide the inspection for that project. Well, that's a 15% minimum. Yes, usually at 15%, which is attributable 15 to 20% for engineering services. Now, what we're doing is that we're taking a percentage of that amount. Let's use 15% as a, for instance, when we're estimating 3% to do the project management phase of that and, and to do the actual contract bid. Now, right now, we take on that person by the project, for project management, and that's done by our own in-house staff. But we just don't have the capacity to do that. So you need to bring somebody on board to oversee those projects. So you'll get them, let's say, all of your road programs that you want outsourced and say, "Well, deliver those", and that's what they will do. The design and what, they will retain a consultant to do the design. And with this, in the past, a lot of engineering companies, if they were doing the design, they had to get the job. What do you call that now? Su, well, supervised. Yes, the site inspection, yeah, because you could not get a separate company involved. Well, a lot of times, it's desirable to have the consulting firm that does the design actually to do the inspection, you know, changing orders and whatnot. But that continuity will still be there with this. It's just, you know, if you can take the engineering as a core component, you've got project management, you've got consultant appointment and then inspection and then contract admin. The two end pieces will be dealt by this project management individually. And it's the only way that we'll be able to deliver the program that's before you. Because that $300,000, really, we could do a lot of roadwork with $300,000. Yes, but you won't have your program delivered, however. We don't have the manpower. We just don't have the manpower. That's what, that's why we need to get all of our work done, basically. Well, that's, you see, the one point I want to make though is this. This is a unique year. So I think you have to go project management. What I'm hoping, if we're clearing the decks and if we have all the programs and work done and the 2016 programs done, then we come back to what I call a normal year. So your 2017 program is just going to be based on the funding availability that I mentioned. You won't have to, well, that's exactly what I was going to ask. After we've outsourced all of those projects, first thing first, are, will these projects be identified? So we, we can know what program is involved before these programs are given out to a firm? Well, what I'm proposing, because I have a rough list right now, we're working on this tender to get it out this week, you know? Certainly, when we come back, and I think the report says the 16th of February, it's really the 15th, we'll be coming back on the 15th of February to recommend a firm or more than one firm, but we'll also identify the projects that we're proposing to be done. So after, let's say, all the projects are done this year and outsourced and everything. After this, are you anticipating that after all of the projects, all of the departments? Well, once we're fully staffed, we'll be able to complete all of the projects without outsourcing? Is that what you're figuring? The theory behind this is that whatever capital budget we will present to you the next year should should be able to be managed by the staff that is in place. This is really to catch up because last year we lagged, you know, with a little bit of changes in leadership in the departments and so on. So some of the projects fell behind. So in theory, your works in progress should only be those projects that have been waylaid now for different regions or there's some projects that have not, have even been started yet. And this project management company will be able to give us a one-time assistance to catch up. We're in the process right now of hiring two project coordinators and that will go a long way, a long way. One started today, I believe. That's right, one started today. Mr. Grima?
Well, I looked at your chart and it's almost half and half right now. So we'll do 12 projects, outsource
So we'll do 12 projects, outsource 13. So it shows the amount of work that needs to be done in one year. It's a big program, it's huge, it's huge. And I look at your forecast of outsourcing and it's, you know, it's $9.7 million. You know, yeah, yeah. So I mean, it's a lot of money, people want it, I think it's exceptional. I really like the plan and it's only for one year. It's better to do this now than delaying, delaying, delaying? Because it costs more every year because of construction and all of this, it's expensive. Well, $300,000, Mr. Darch, is on top of the two project managers that are getting hired. Yes, yes, additional costs. How much is it costing for those two that we've already talked about? You know, with regards to their commitment? Well, the project coordinators, hmm, roughly, with benefits, $85,000 each, each, $85,000 each. So the $300,000 is a one-time with regards to capital expenditure projects. You know, we put 120 in the budget, i- in capital, you know, just in case. Look, we're going to take about 3% of the project, so we're ask, you know, that we're asking them to do. And I'm hoping, and that's where I can't put the 300,000, you know, I said, there's about $9 million worth of work, 3%, 370,000. I just routed it up to 300,000. If we have bids that are slightly over that, then the $300,000 that we've identified, we'll have to draw from, from that. It's a bit of a buffer. But if we find that we come in and we don't need, we don't need that money, that's something that we can come back to council and say, well, there's an ability, there's some money that might be available to do some undertaking. There's certainly not a shortage of projects to be done. Mrs. Chouagnier, we don't need to move ahead with those projects, you know, like caro, monies that we've received money for, because there's nothing to show for it. We need to get those done. And also, this, sometimes one project might affect another project. So I believe that we need to clear the way, clear the way. This is not projects that have been waylaid two years ago, we need to catch up. And don't forget, if the federal comes up with more money, we'll have more money than the grants and everything else to help us out. You see, the department is being aggressive on this, there's no doubt about it. Because even with the timetable that I gave you here, we won't have any firms on board until the end of February, so you can see, three months of the year, three months of the year. You know, it's almost gone now. So I will ask that the consultant firm or firms, that they give us a critical path on every one of the projects and we'll give that forward to council. We want to give you an assurance that the total program, you know, with the timelines, is respected. Any other questions, all those in favor then? Carrie, thank you. Well, that's fine. Item 9.2, administration legal tender. That the Committee of the Whole recommended Town Council to reject the offer of service and be it also recommended that Town Council authorize a chief administrative officer to obtain legal services from different legal firms in keeping with the expertise that is deemed necessary in individual instances. Any questions, all those in favor? Carrie then, thank you. Are there any questions for our department heads? Mr. Leonard, for our fire chief? Yes, because he hasn't had any questions tonight and he seems to be very lonely. Is it possible to take a look at the Clarence Creek Co-op right now? To determine whether or not there's a way the city of Clarence and Rockland can compel an owner to remove that building from where it stands? Because it's really unsafe. It's an eyesore, it's stuck smack dab in the middle of the village and it's full of termites. There are many families living in that building and they're not human families, you know? So we have to take care of this. This matter's been dragging on for many years and we have to take a look at those options that are available to us from a legal perspective, to see what can be done to compel the owner of this building to demolish this building. This will probably help him to, most probably to sell out the property if he doesn't have the intention of making use of that venue later on. Because the building per se is not use, is not of any use. Because it, it, there's no electricity in that building now, it has not been for many years. Well, the only thing I can do is to perform an inspection of that particular building and take a look at what the laws in existence can allow us to do. Can you please start up with this process, Mr. Saboreng, as soon as possible? Yes? Well, fine. Look, you're gonna, I, I believe there's a bankruptcy involved in that. You'll have to deal with some banks here. Yeah, probably I will have to be, enter into discussions with banks. Certainly, vermin is ever-present in this particular building. We, we have to contend with another issue altogether, hmm, yes. Well, I believe it would be greatly appreciated if you could start doing something in this regard. Thank you. Mr. Leonard, Mr. Klieru? Do we have an idea as to what the next mill rate will be? Residential and commercial, once we've adopted the budget? Mr. Mayor, we don't finalize our tax rates until April. So what we're talking about here is what we've approved during the budget. If there are any changes, we will be receiving the requirements from the school boards and the counties, of course, which we're awaiting receipt. And we'll come back in April, once the finalized tax rates are. We don't expect them to be any different than what was voted in the budget. 1%, 1.9, I believe? School board, uh, well, well, look, there, there might be some slight discrepancies or differences there. Well, the question, Dave, then, is, I was speaking to Mrs. Collier about the drainage coordinator, the new program that the government will be coming up with, will be making an application in line with that. And now, I know that there's money to be given to municipalities. Well, yes, this is a new program that was introduced, yes, indeed. And we've asked Mr. Compo to complete the application with a very tight deadline on this. Yes, yes, indeed, a very tight deadline. I believe it's January the 29th and we'll make sure that the application gets in on time for that. We, if we already have one, we would qualify already for further programs. So there was a separate timetable involved with something else that we got. The gas tax, by the way, the gas tax for electric cars. Now, the federal gas tax is allowing a certain amount of money for municipalities that want this going in their community, you know? The plugins, yes, yes. Well, there are some companies that came under that program in Quebec there some years ago. And they were ready to install some of those electrical posts, but nobody was forthcoming in implementing that, yeah. I believe, the, one was proposed for the town hall area also, maybe on Cartier Boulevard? Oh, I'm not gonna go there, not on Cartier Boulevard, don't even go there. Well, if we could see what the benefits would be, fine, that would be great. Well, I know three citizens that do work in Ottawa. They travel from Hoxbury to Ottawa and they say that it would be handy to have some recharging stations or pumps, if I might call them that, here in Rockland, because it's halfway. I believe that, we asked the River Rock people, when it did pass, they went by, you know, to come up with a, they came up with a map, you know, to determine where they could come up with connection posts and nobody was interested, was interested. Well, there's more interest in those cars right now, there's more interest now. Yeah, yeah, well, we'd have to charge, you know, yes, of course. It doesn't take a lot of electricity, by the way, to charge those cars. Two years ago, it's a long time when it comes to electric cars, you know? We're already talking in seven years about driverless cars. It's good, it's moving very, very fast, it's something that we could get involved in. Although I kind of look at that and go, you know, if you come up with dealerships here in the city of Clarence and Rockland, Ford or Hyundai, that, or even Chrysler, do they sell any electric cars? Well, hmm, maybe hybrids. Well, if they would start, you know, selling electric cars, we might have a point of interest there to set up electrical posts. Well, maybe, how about you, Shazan, would you? Mr. Zant, would you be interested in buying an electric? Yeah, tonight, certainly, an electrical car would be so handy with the cost of electricity and the cold that's prevalent outside. Sure, thank you. Something to look into. Councillor Grimah, Mr. Darch, the status of the EA for Saint Joseph? We talked about this out, off the table here. Well, there's not much with regards to this, if you'll permit me. I'll make a call to the consultant with the, with respect to the EA and the design and I'll circulate it amongst members of council, how's that? Yeah, okay, any other questions then? Fine, oops. Mr. Darch, somebody phoned me from Bourgette today and said, he was very happy that at 8:30, all the sidewalks had salt there and he was very happy. It's moving quite fast. I had good comments on the sidewalk care that we're providing. I'll pass that along, Mr. Mayor. And I must say that snow removal was performed quite ably, quite well. The village of Clarence and Rockland, there was, and even the city of Bourgette there, the town, the town of Bourgette, well, I'll make sure that the staffers are made aware. Salting and snow clearing, that's much better in the city than on county roads, but I won't say anything more than that. Other than we're very efficient at what we do, yes, yes. Find anything else for our department heads? Councillor Zant?
Yes, I just need to make one comment with council. A number of us will be attending the OCA conference and will be making three presentations on three of our projects. The Saint Joseph project will be presented to the minister to see if we can get approved funding. Once again, we'll be discussing the potential OPP fire situation and the Lorient sewer replacement, so the continuation with regards to what was done last summer and determine, to determine what can be done. As you've read, Baba Mewa, I sent to you last week, we were denied the funding on the screening project and the funding on the sanitary sewer plants. Mr. Darch is asking why we didn't receive funding? And if it does receive funding, well, we want to know if there's something we didn't do correctly. And once we understand why we were refused, we'll be reconsidering, representing that one again. At the same time, I took a look at federal programs available, I'm not sure if you're all aware, but the federal government created a new department that is called Infrastructure and Communities. Because they want to focus on helping the municipalities and they've created a website to that effect. It's not just functioning yet, but they did write a mandate for that particular project and they've got forming focuses, one is public transit, one is social infrastructure. The next one is a collection of infrastructures, but in particularly, more particularly, water and other facilities in the last category. Approving the building and infrastructure. So we're checking to see what the release of that is. I believe the budget shall be approved sometime in March. You know, we sort of have the idea of an amount involved, but we need to follow that with applications. We need to keep a close eye on that. When should we start work with sewers in Bourgette? Well, that's one of the projects, certainly that's going to be fit within that particular program. If it's a grant that's given out, we'll go ahead and apply for both places, certainly. Certainly, we'll do that. I know that today, I had occasion to speak with Mr. Perizier and we're making a presentation to the Ministry of Transportation, I believe. And the minister said, told us to be patient last summer, we've been patient enough. We'll be bringing that back up again very soon in February. I believe we'll be also dealing with Mrs. Mayor Watson, Mr. Perizier, Mayor Watson and myself will be there. And let's see if we can join forces instead of fighting amongst each other. Of course, we'll join forces and come up with a united front to ask what is due to us or owed us. I don't know if it's better to ask for both villages together or to come up with two separate requirements for two villages? Well, how can we pick and choose, Mrs. Chouagnier? Well, if we amalgamate both, depending on the amount that involved, well, we'll see what they're willing to pay and what the conditions of the grants are and we'll go from there. Yes, that's right, because they're not going to let us apply for two different villages. That might be the big sticking point. Yes, certainly, if you read the mandate, they want to make a significant impact with this money and help the municipalities. Because the article that was in, in the Municipal World Magazine explains this quite well and the theory behind why they've created this specific fund, that's first time at the federal level. Mr. Darch, we obtained a grant for 175,000 kilometers of road, Mr. Darch? I believe you have nothing to do with that, right? Did I hear, or did I read something? May, may, I, 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 I'm not aware of anything like that, Mr. Mayor. But in any event, in any event, okay, all right, folks, any other questions? Councillor Leonard, Mr. I've had discussions yesterday along with Mr. Druin and others and Mr. Crack. And Mr. Crack seemed to mention, I asked the following question. If federal government comes up with an infrastructure-related funding government, would there be a chance that provincial government would do in 2008 and 2009 and match what the federal would give out? Mr. Crack said it was a strong possibility that the provincial government would do so. And Mr. Druin's assistant confirmed it to me yesterday that there was a great possibility that on the 20th of January, they're might, they're looking for a spot in Rockland to proceed to consultations. I've informed Mr. Druin that on 20th of January, we're already busy. I believe the consultation is in the afternoon. But I believe that they'll contact Mrs. Collier to that effect. Yes, yes, I believe I've already been in contact with, to that regard. Well, adjournment at, oh, that's right, we have to retire, retire to a closed meeting. So until then, we'll see you, folks, next month. Bye for now.